Good evening, everyone. Because we didn't start the meeting as we normally do, we would like to take a moment to do our pledge of allegiance. So please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fire exit, so I'll go to the side of the cafeteria. I'm gonna be doing the budget presentation. Good evening. Tonight, we're gonna have our first of several district budget presentations. And tonight, we're asking the board to adopt the budget so we can move forward. If the board members have any questions that they wish to ask me during the presentation, I would find answering them as well, so I don't have to mention you. So I usually start out with what's new. There wasn't a lot new this year in the governor's proposal. So I'll just go back a little bit. We do have a state budget. We are able to have the legislative run, which always for us seems to be a little bit more at state aid. So that's extremely good news for us. But there are these two little caveats that came through as the New York state law. So community state aid. So it's a new topic. I don't know a lot about it. I don't think anyone seems to know a lot about it. But it was in the governor's run. It's roughly for Beacon, about $80,000. How it came through on the final budget was that it was included in our foundation aid amount, which, as you'll see in a few minutes, was more than what the governor had originally estimated. The community state aid, though, has a purpose. So it has to be set aside for specific purposes. When the business officials all kind of lobbying and ask, state exactly what you spent it for, we got a lot of different answers. So as you see, I'll mention it as I show you the numbers. But I didn't include it as just a total overall amount. It's really for community, community, school, parents, family, interaction. So me being the conservative accountant that I am, I kind of left it off into the general pot of money and foundation aid until we get some more. So that's extra money that we'd be able to use once the guidelines for that are set. Changes to the star exemption. I just wanted to say it publicly to people that star exemption comes on the tax bill. And it's set aside, and it's a reduction of the school taxes in that the school district does receive a check directly from New York State. The new law, if you are a new homeowner, you will pay the full amount of the school taxes and receive a rebate check from the state. So that will look a little bit different. And I'm hoping, you know, it will cause a little bit of confusion because people will be paying actually more. They won't be getting their star exemption on their tax bill. They will be getting a rebate check from the state. Not sure why that is, but it will only be for new homeowners. Don't know whether it'll be this year or next. But when I get more information, again, I will share it with you. So these are some significant items that impact the 2016-17 budget. I mentioned it early in a couple of weeks ago, but I just want to say it again. There was an overall reduction of the district contribution for teachers' retirement and employees' retirement. Two significant budget items in our budget. Both percentages were less, which meant that we had to budget less. So even though the salary information would be more, the percentages were low enough where the budget was significantly less. That actually helped us this year when we talk about the tax cap. We had seven teacher retirements. The plan is to replace all of the retirements, you know, based on when the final numbers are. But those seven teacher retirements, they are seasoned teachers. So there will be a breakage in their salary in replacement. We did get an increase of state aid. We had a small increase in the governor's run. We had a much more significant one in the legislative one, which you'll see in a few minutes. And that increase in state aid does allow us to use less of our reserves and fund balance, which, again, I'll mention in a few minutes. So just an overall. This is probably the lowest percentage I've ever had to say publicly. So our budget-to-budget increase was .75%, less than 1%. And our tax levy increase, again, is right around that, .76. That is our tax cap. And again, I'll show you the slide that actually breaks that all out. The proposed budget does maintain the current level of staffing and all the academic programs that we currently have. So some additional items that we were lucky enough to include, considering that low percentage and tax cap. So included in this budget are the addition of two social worker positions. They will be in the elementary school. There was some talk about using that community aid for social workers. But again, for right now, I included it in the budget item and still didn't include the community aid, but that could be a way we use it. The social workers right now in the elementary school, we have four in the district overall. We have one full-time at the high school, one at the middle school, and the elementary share two. So now that they will be fully staffed in each of the elementary schools. We are adding a library media specialist. Again, Sergeant and Forrest will share a library media specialist and an art teacher. So in the budget, we are increasing for the one library media specialist. We added some money in the nurse line, so a nurse substitute. Money to have more of a perm sub-type nurse that will be in the district 180 days. So what we're finding is very hard to find substitute nurses. Nurses are an integral part of the day, of the Children's Day. You know, we have a lot of students in our district with severe medical issues. And we've been having difficulties just on a substitute level, having a nurse. Also, being able to help do some other paperwork, some other regulations have increased for nurses. So we've increased what that looks like, the money part in the budget. Yes?
Do you want it at the end, or?
No, 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 go ahead. That would be fine.
For the library media specialist, is that gonna put that all elementary schools have one per building? Or are people gonna still be sharing?
No, that would mean that each elementary school will have a library media specialist.
Okay, good. So my question was, we had talked for quite some time about the inequities between our elementary schools in regards to, and I thought it was library, but in addition to art and to PE. Are all of those inequities going to be evened out, or strictly the library?
Okay, so the library media specialist will be an actual position. We did speak about art, and we're still working on the scheduling part. So our initial look at it was that teachers are, each building is offered numbers of times of arts or different grade levels of numbers and times of art. So we're trying to make that uniform across the district. We're unsure at the moment whether that means adding an actual position. So although there is money in the budget for that, I'm not at the point where I could recommend actually adding an art teacher at the time. The progression was to do it over a two-year period. We may have the flexibility. I'm not sure we need a 1.0 art teacher. And again, we don't want to recommend to the board or to the public to add positions that will not be fully subscribed. So for right now, we're still looking at the specials in general. PE, we have a .8 in one of the elementary schools. And again, it's based on sections. So we are looking at all specials. We're looking at music, we're looking at art, we're looking at PE. We want to make sure that if we are adding a position, that that position would be fully subscribed. So we're not quite at that point yet. The library media specialist allows the elementary schools to have media and also to have library. But then the media part also could be a push-in with other classrooms. So that is why the initial 1.0, because there is definitely a need there, and they would be fully subscribed.
And when is it that you expect to have that information?
I will have it by the hearing, so before the taxpayers are asked to vote on the budget, whether or not that would be a halftime position or not. So I'm still looking at the staffing part.
So before this is actual final, before the budget that goes before the public will be final, we will know whether there will continue to be inequities throughout our elementary schools.
I will speak more to that, yes, the week before the budget vote, which is the budget hearing, when I have a lot more detail. And the public then, at that point, can ask questions. I'm sure that would be a question that they would ask. We'll have the information by that thing.
Are you looking at band also in elementary?
We offer band. That's one of the things we are looking for. We don't have a band teacher. And again, that's something else that we want to look for across the district. So again, specials is, we started having the conversation with all the elementary principals this week. And we're doing it based on sections. So again, if we're gonna add a position, we want to make sure that it's fully subscribed.
So for bands, like Melissa had said, for a one-year versus two-year plan, is band more part of the two-year plan then?
Art and band were part of the two-year plan, so yes. But if they're both not full-time positions, and they're both halftime positions, it might be able to be put in here. But it depends on how many sections we need and what the program will look like. So the goal is to have the elementaries, and I'm not saying exactly the same, because each building has its own uniqueness about it, but to offer the same program across the four elementary schools in general terms is definitely the goal of where we want to be. So it may look a little different in some of the schools, but we're trying to make it uniform across, about sections. So that's what we're trying to do.
Just one more thing, Emery. With the social workers, it seems like, and I appreciate that we're looking at the social emotional needs of the students and making sure that we're meeting them. It seems like last year, though, we also included the security guards into this year's budget to help meet that crisis situation and the social emotional needs. So is it the social workers more so to meet the mandated counseling's of IEPs and 504s and RTI? Or is it more so to deal with the crisis situations?
Well, I'd have to say both. The senior school security monitors were a great help in the buildings. But they're not trained the same way that social workers are. So there's limitations. I mean, I don't want to say that they're not useful. They are a wonderful asset to the buildings. But they can just go so far so that they're not interacting with the student and the parent. The social workers are definitely a great asset. And you're talking about elementary principals who, right now, don't have assistant principals. They're the administrators. So they're leaning on their psychologist, they're leaning on their social workers. And at times, based on staffing, you may have an elementary principal that does not have a psychologist or social worker in their building. So you want to make sure that they have the resources available. The senior school security monitor does help with the media crisis, but for the longer term, it's more of an asset for them. So that's what we're trying to do.
Hey, Emery?
Yes?
Since you take your question down, I'm actually gonna jump back to the star exemption. You said for new homeowners, it's gonna be slightly different. You don't mean first-time homeowners, right? You mean anybody who buys a house in the district, whether it's their third or fourth house. If it's somebody buying a house in the district, they're gonna fall under this category, correct?
My understanding is yes.
Not just first-time.
It's not a first-time homebuyer. It's any changes to buying a house. So if you sell your house and buy a new house, the way the tax rules, you'll be paying more and then get the money back, rather than us getting it from the state.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I have to talk about the sign. It was about the sign. So the electronic sign has been a kind of a thorn in our side. We've tried everywhere to get parts for that sign. I remember coming here 11 years ago, and that sign being bought and not installed. I just remember everyone talking about the sign and not even knowing at that point what it was. And it has been a valuable asset. But it's done. So, you know, we can't get parts for it. So we did increase the equipment line in the operations and maintenance. And I think Mr. Savelli mentioned that in his presentation to do that. So that's part of something else that we wanted to say.
Who's gonna, or is there gonna be RFPs put out when that comes to be? And will it be different choices given? Or will just buildings and grounds make the decision?
No, building, no. We can come forward to have a discussion of exactly what, because I think it's gonna look very different than what we have now. And I think the technology has increased. So that would be a discussion matter, not just exactly what it looks like now. So, yes. Okay, so I'm not gonna get into great detail. But again, this is the tax cap calculation. It's all governed by New York State Controller's Office. The important part that I think here is that the maximum levy increase is .97%, which, and again, I'll speak to dollar amount how much that is. But it does include the bus proposition as well. And I'll talk about that in a minute on how we plan to finance that. And then just putting the tax levy in perspective, it just shows that our proposed 1617 levy increase at the cap is the lowest it's ever been here. I think it's the lowest it's ever been statewide. So, you know, you're not gonna hear a lot of business officials very happy about that. But it is what it is. So those show where we've been for the last four years at the cap. So how we're gonna pay for the budget? So that shows you the final bus, budget and bus proposition for 1516 versus 1617. That includes a payment of roughly $75,000 over a five-year period to pay for the buses. And again, I'll speak to that in a second. But I have to live within this limit. So the increase overall dollar-wise is $500,200, which, again, is the lowest, you know, we've ever been. But those factors that I talked about, about the teacher retirements and the TRS and ERS percentages, all helped us to get to this point. The other part that helped us was the increase in state aid, which was $650,000, which is 2.49%. That $26,822,638 does not include that community aid just because I don't know what, you know, we need to use it for. So that would be in addition. And when the guidance comes forward, we can use that. The goal on the use of reserves, so it's less money of use of reserves. It's basically appropriated fund balance that we try to use every year from the current year budget. And the tax reduction reserve is a little bit more than it was last year. But that reserve was set up at the sale of Old Beacon High School. It was a little over $1 million. We had a systematic plan. We didn't need to use it over the last two years. So we need to spend it within a 10-year period. So we're gonna kind of catch up. Because last year, with the state aid amount, we did not need to use it at all.
So does this wipe it out?
This does not wipe it out. We had $800,000, so we're still at $500,000. So we did not utilize it. In past years, we put it up to use it, but we have not had to use it. But we need to use it within a 10-year period, so we need to start.
When does that expire, the 10-year period?
10-year period, I think we have like three years left.
After we use this amount, what's left?
About $500,000.
Okay, so we have $500,000 to spend over the next three years.
Three years, yes. The other difference is the...
Go ahead.
Okay, is the transfer from debt service account. So we have money in a debt service account, and it's about $2 million. And it's set aside, and it's only allowed to be used for reduction of debt. So again, we did not need to utilize that. That's also money that's set aside in the future if we needed to use that as well. And we did not need to utilize that this year.
Do the numbers that you have here for the state aid, is that including any funds from the fund balance and the gap elimination?
That includes the gap. So for us, the gap elimination adjustment was about $345,000 that we got additional, so that definitely is in there. If you look on the state website, you kind of want to figure out how the money works. When we get our state aid, it includes the pre-K grant, which you can't include because that's separate. And there is a small adjustment. I have the financial advisors that do all of our capital kind of look at our building aid. There's some talk about interest rate recalibration that they talk about every year. So to be conservative, there was a small difference in that. I took that out as well. You know, again, to be conservative. I'd rather be at the part where we have more money than I come to you and say, oops, you know, we have less money. So, and then the community aid came out of that as well. Still a significant amount of state aid. So we were thrilled about that. So we're able to maintain the program, the staffing, not use as many reserves as we have, and kind of go forward. So the bus proposition that we plan to put up, and I think Mr. Mackey spoke about it in greater detail, 372 passenger buses and 120 passenger van. The interesting part is, I always tell him to make it even. So he made 384, 483, so I remember. So it's frontwards and backwards. So just make it a little bit more interesting for me to remember. Our transportation state aid ratio is 59.1% this year. So what does that mean? That means that we get 59.1% back in transportation aid for buses that we purchase. And we receive that aid over five years, which is why we are able to finance it over five years. We're trying to match the expenditure with the revenue. Why my "b"? I just want to say briefly about contingency. And again, I will speak more about that in the hearing. Also, you will start, you will receive a postcard and newsletters and all kinds of information pretty soon that will talk about things like the contingency. So again, there's no increase in the tax levy. So as you saw before, we're increasing the tax levy a little over 500, so approximately $500,000 would have to be cut from the proposed budget if we had to go to contingency. And then specific things that we look at, and we always look at these things, and these are things we never want to have to consider. But they are, part of the law is the non-mandatory equipment purchases and definitely full cost of facility use for all non-school organizations. So that would be a huge issue here because we have been very lucky about having the community, like City of Beacon and Town of Fischel, be able to use our schools for no cost because they are non-for-profit organizations offering good programs. And again, I was gonna say this in superintendent's report, but I'm gonna kind of throw it out there a little bit now. But we're very close. In fact, tonight, at the Beacon Council meeting, they're talking about instituting after-school programs in all of our elementary schools. And they're asking to do that. So this is an important part because this would affect that. You know, we're really trying to move forward and offer this kind of program. City of Beacon has been wonderful about, they're running it. The district is not doing any of that. In fact, they asked me to come to their meeting tonight. And I said, I can't, I'm doing the budget presentation. But I will ask them to come here to speak to the board once they get authorization from the city. So that would be some particular area that would definitely be impacted by that. And again, you know, we talked about the same thing. You cut athletics and clubs, the non-mandated things that we don't really want to have to think about.
I'm Emery, I just had a question. Is there any information on how the property purchased by a religious group is impacting or will impact the school budget? Because there's a lot of talk about that before, and how it's gonna just go away, and that's...
Well, it didn't really go away. We did find out that the parcel in the Town of Fischel that was purchased by the Jehovah Witnesses was only at a 44% tax exemption. There was no decision yet, but they have filed for the rest of the property. So I don't know what the ramification would be yet. They're not even sure that they will get the full exemption, even though they applied for it. And again, I didn't get into a great amount of detail. The Town of Fischel has to examine that to see whether it qualifies. I think there may still be people living in there. So that's an impact. It will impact everyone else's taxes. So again, when we talk, at the hearing, we'll talk about how that will just get redistributed. The positive part of that is, a couple of weeks ago, I had a meeting with the mayor and the city administrator. And they were talking about all the building that's going on here, the construction that's going on here, the townhouses that are going up. So all of those things will increase the amount of assessed value, and the more people will be paying into taxes. So I'm hoping that some of that will come on the tax rolls this year to kind of offset what may come through as a tax exemption for the religious organization.
And if it doesn't, do we have a contingency? Like, will we have them have to borrow from somewhere to make up the difference? Or it would just be the community?
So the way it works is if the community votes for the budget the way it is, right? So the tax levy is what the tax levy is. And then in August, when I'm getting the information and we actually levy the taxes, it will be depending on that. So we don't have to borrow because the district will get 100% of the levy once we do it. But it will mean more money for different people, how it will be distributed. So the rest of the community would have to pay a little bit more. Okay, that would be spread out.
Yeah, Emery?
Yes?
Just another question. Looking at the positions based on the ones that you're proposing for the 1617 school year, have we looked beyond to see if we would be able to sustain those based on worst-case scenarios and past histories if we're forecasting out, like a five-year or so forth, the sustainability of adding those positions?
Those positions, yes. There's some teaching positions. And again, we're trying to maintain program going forward and section. So what we believe, and looking at numbers, is we see a lot of families moving here in the community. We see a lot of non-school age children. So we see a lot of young families with children coming in that will help us maintain the elementary side of it. And again, I budgeted for all of the positions if they don't need to be filled based on numbers. So if we're looking at secondary and high school, because our high school enrollment is a little bit less than it's been before. So position-wise, the money may be in the budget, and we would provide it if we had, you know, the need to do that. But if we didn't need to do that in some aspects, we would not. And that's basically how we get appropriate fund balance for the final year. If you don't use the money that's in the budget, then it goes into fund balance or we use it for the following year's tax levy. Yes?
So currently, you're proposing a .76% increase in the tax levy. According to your other slide, though, we can go up to .97. Is that correct?
It's .97 with the bus proposition.
Okay. And your slide shows .75, I'm sorry, .76 currently. And I still think that's including the bus proposition? That one, yep.
That one on the top?
Yeah.
So the point, actually, the .97...
That was in one of the prior slides?
Right, right. The budget, right, the budget part is 66,750. So with the $75,000, so you probably have a little bit on the reserve side to use less of.
Well, I guess my concern is if .97 is the maximum levy, and we're only, and we're doing .76, that implies we could do an additional .21?
Right, so we could increase the budget or we could decrease the amount that you're using in reserves.
Well, yeah, brings up my next point, that tax reduction reserve. We're using 350 this year. So if we have $500,000 for the next three years, that's roughly $166,000 per year, which means that we'll be going down about $190,000. You know, if we spread it out evenly, we'll be going down about $190,000 in that reserve next year, which means we'd have to pick that $190,000 up from someplace else, assuming we're going with the same type of budget.
Right.
I'm more a proponent of maximizing the tax levy to get it up to what the limit is, especially since it's so low this year, and reducing that reserve a little bit. So that'll smooth out the next three years. Because my concern is that will be used up. And once that's used up, either we have to cut back on our budget or we have to raise taxes to make up the difference.
And we might be limited in what we can raise taxes because of the tax cap.
We most certainly will be limited. Because I'm assuming we'll still be under the tax cap. And so my preference is to, especially this year, it's such a small amount. If we increase the levy by .21%, that's roughly $160,000 spread out across everybody, which is probably a trivial amount. And it will have more of an impact on our reserving abilities down the road. That's my concern.
I mean, I second that, but was there a strategic reason to not go with .97?
No, well, I think that I went first on the estimate that we weren't gonna be receiving that much in state aid. So again, that's a great thing. So the budget was pretty much done after that. I mean, again, when we talked about music and specials and we talked about that, there is some area where we could add that. But there really wasn't anything else at this point. I mean, the budget being created with those positions going forward, it wasn't enough on a sustaining basis to add. And again, you know, Anthony asked me that, on a sustaining basis. I mean, we could add things, but the thing that I don't want to do is add things and then have to, especially if you're dealing with staff. You want to make sure you can sustain it more than one year. I don't want to add and say, "Oh yeah, we can do all of these things in staffing," and then having to tell you next year, "Oh, we can't do that," or "We have to cut the program." So I think I was probably being a little more conservative, and again, that's, that can't be me. But I, I, I always try to use as much of tax, the tax reduction reserve is specifically meant to reduce the levy. So that, in that aspect, yes. I do worry, though, that we have three more years, and this, this tax cap is not going away, you know, as much as we all pray. It doesn't work that way, so...
If you were to increase the tax levy to, to the .97, then you could reduce the tax reserve to like 100, maybe by, by 160,000 roughly. So you'd bring it down to about 190, which would make it a much smoother transition over the next, across the year.
Right, that would leave like, I don't, it's like 660 or something for the next three, right? Did you do the rest of that?
Yeah, yeah. Because right now, it's 350, which, which means if we, next year, if, if we do 160 next year, that means there's 190 that has to come from someplace. And, you know, and I, I can't predict what, what the tax cap is going to be next year.
Amber, with this date, increased date aid that most districts have received, I'm, I'm seeing a common theme that a lot of districts are giving back and staying below the levy and, and the tax cap, and giving it back to the tax law. So you seeing the same thing, or are you seeing that they're going to the full?
I think, I believe they're going to the full. And the reason being is because your increase is based upon your increase. So in other words, it's, it's a constant, so you have to take your current year levy to add the increase. I don't think anyone real, really thought that we were going to get a less than 1%. I mean, we had an add-back for our capital, so we could have been in worse shape than, than we are, believe it or not. I mean, I, I thought that less than 1% wasn't possible. So I think they were, I know that the Business Official Association is lobbying them to change the way the tax cap is. But again, if, but if districts are able to pass budgets with the tax cap the way it is, they're not going to have an incentive to do that. I mean, we actually have some districts that have negative tax cap, you know, a tax cap calculation because of changes in their capital. So they're in really bad shape, where they have to do overrides and stuff, so... But I, I'm seeing that most, most, if not all of the districts are doing exactly what is the mandate. We, you know, and we've done that before in the past as well, so...
I guess the only thing I would say that, you know, I mean, when a district says they can stay within the tax cap, they mean, most, for just about all districts, is because they're using their, their reserves.
Right.
And sooner or later, it'll all be out of reserves. And that's the same as, as paying more than, for your mortgage than you can, and dipping into your savings account. When your savings account is, is empty, now you're in big trouble. And that's, I think, what most districts are going to say.
Right, so as you remember, so last year, you can see the use of reserves and appropriated fund balance was 2.5 million, but the years before that, several years, we were at 3.5. And again, that's another consideration. You know, Beacon landed itself on, on the susceptible to fiscal stress list because of our fund balance. And, you know, so, and, and that's a thing that the auditors look at. So yes, you have a lot of reserves and fund balance, but, but they'll say, you know, you, just be careful, don't be spending all of your money at once. So from that standpoint, because we have other fiscal organizations looking for us, at us, we want to make sure that we have the reserves. And if we keep dipping into them, those are the kind of things that will affect our credit rating. Because when we have that credit call for Moody's, that was one of the things that they mentioned to me. How that will affect us in the future is if we have another capital project, we won't get as good an interest rate as we currently have. So you have to be careful, you're right, about using that. And we have other reserves on the books, but there are specific reasons. So they're not as easily used as a tax reduction reserve are. And, and to be honest, it's, it's harder to appropriate fund balance. Appropriating fund balance comes out of the current year budget. So you have to underspend your expenses and make sure your revenues come in exactly which budget. So it gets more difficult. So I'll go back to the slide that tells you where to vote. Our budget vote is May 17th. Again, I'll say this numerous times, so no one, so everyone knows where to go, but it's at Beacon High School for all City of Beacon residents, and Glenham Elementary School for Fishville and Wapton residence, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And that's it for now. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Could you speak real quickly about absentee ballots?
Absentee ballots, people can mail in a request, and we're looking at Kelly, so if I say something wrong, please tell me.
The application's on the website.
Okay.
And it's available in our office.
So the application is on the website, it's available in our office if you're not going to be here for the vote to get an absentee ballot. Was that your question on how?
Well, I just, I know that there's been questions within the public about absentee ballots and, and the ability to vote, and I, I want to be sure that everybody has that opportunity. But I'm sure that the directions are very clear on the website as far as the process...
To go, yes.
To go, okay.
We haven't had, you know, people who we directed to the website have been able, you know, to figure out, we, we do get, I, I imagine we may get a lot more.
I know we get quite a few of them each year, but I, I would imagine we may get more this year. Does anyone else have any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll quickly review the agenda. We'll have student and school presentations, if we have any tonight. Parent groups, open to the public. We'll have our superintendent's report, our board comments, and committee reports. We'll have new business. We'll have our consent agenda. We are not using a second executive session. We will then adjourn the meeting. Do we have any student or school presentations tonight?
Hi, my name is Anya Garcia. I am a National, I am a Beacon High School student, and I'm a National Society student. And I just wanted to remind everyone that both due days on the 14th of April is an autism awareness event. And we just want to ask all schools and all students to, and all adults to participate in what we do on Monday on the 14th of April. And there's also, we will also set an item for Beacon High School lunch, like in cafeteria and stuff, for all the presidents will go to autism awareness and to help us, and that fun event for the autism awareness walk. And autism awareness walk will take place on the 24th of April, and it will be at the Duchess Fairgrounds. And we will also gather and recycle bottles. And when we, and when we are gathering recycle bottles, the presidents will go to, to help us like the autism awareness walk. And we also have people who can't get there, the high schools, and be at the high school at 7:30, and it will be leaving at 7:30 to go to the fairgrounds for the autism awareness walk. And lastly, there is a token fundraiser that we are hosting at the Rosen Yogurt Shop in Fishville between 5:00 and 10:00 p.m. 20% of the purchases will go to the NHS and the National Society to help us, um, do a lot of things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any parent groups tonight?
Good evening. My name is Larry Pudding. I'm a parent facilitian for the Beacon Board of Parents. Would you like to see students making people aware that April is the Board of Awareness Month? And I just wanted to continue to make people aware of that. We meet every Thursday night, 7:00 to 8:30. We are supported by Beacon People Personnel Services, and we are a parent-led group with their support. During the month of April, we are encouraging educators, family members, parents to highlight the development of disabilities, if it has a significant impact, behavior, communication, social skills, learning, and communication. I'd like to share a few facts with you, that, for example, an average one in eight to nine children is diagnosed with autism. It is almost five times more likely that boys will have autism. 67 children are diagnosed per day. That diagnosis is about one every 20 minutes. Some states have had an increase in diabetes and autism of 2,000% in the last decade. More children are diagnosed with autism this year than are diagnosed with diabetes and cancer combined. The cost to the nation is about $35 billion this year. And my, my, there is no medical detection of cure for autism. About 46% of children identify with autism spectrum disorders as above-average intelligence and ability. Some of the great leaders of the world had autism, including Albert Einstein, Isaac Newton, Thomas Jefferson, Wolfgang Habermann, and so on. More modern-day figures include Steve Jobs, the late Steve Jobs, and then Apple, Susan Boyle, Temple钳. Those are the factors I want to share. Just wanted to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing as a parent group over the last year. We've got a number of presentations by the Hudson Valley Special Education Parent Center. They've been really focusing on highlighting the process that parents can navigate through the IEP process and the 504 process. Really just trying to show how those parents can get the most out of yearly meetings and any other information that they need, even more of a support. We've also had presentations by the Beacon Social Workers. One presentation included managing anxiety for some children that have autism. So going forward, we, we plan to continue the work that we've been doing. We plan to continue with monthly meetings, and we would encourage anybody that wants to attend meetings to join us every Thursday, or every third Thursday, about 7:30 to 8:00 p.m. We will be continuing with the presentations to give parents support on navigating through the IEP process and the 504 process. We also intend to maybe change our name in the future so that we are more open, well, rather than just limiting ourselves to the autism spectrum. We're going to try to encompass all parents who have children with an IEP or 504. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Pudding, could we just tell you that you only need to see, do you stay in the room that you need in, on the third Thursday, and see something, right?
Yeah.
I've been there, but I can't remember the room number, but that would be good information.
C-138.
Thank you, Mr. Pudding.
Good evening, Gillian Rumpello. I'm speaking on behalf of the PTO Collaborative. We just wanted to give you a couple of updates. Last month, the Collaborative donated a movie theater popcorn machine to the NHS at the high school so that they can now make more popcorn for their wonderful movie nights. We also fundraised to purchase buddy benches for each of the four elementary schools. We started a GoFundMe campaign and had reached our 2,000 goal within three days. Thank you, Beacon. Look for these buddy benches in the playgrounds in the spring. And just a quick sentence about what, what a buddy bench is. And it says, "The buddy bench is a simple way to eliminate loneliness and foster friendship on the playground. Students who feel lonely or left out can sit on the buddy bench and ask to be included without having to say a word." Finally, we would like to invite the public to a Board of Ed Meet the Candidate Night on May 11th at the Pete Seeger Theater at BHS High School. It'll be an opportunity for the public to learn about the candidates who are running on May 17th, for the three open seats on the Board of Ed. If you would like to submit a question in advance, you can email the collaborative at b-c-s-d-c-o-l-l-a-b at gmail.com. You can also put questions in an envelope for your child's PTSDO, and the PTSDOs will be gathering the questions at the schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
The email for the Collaborative is the b-c-s-d-c-o-l-l-a-b at gmail.com.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Merhich, and I'm here representing the Advocates for Beacon Schools. I wanted to come here tonight to tell you all to save the date for Tuesday, May 3rd, when ABS will host our first event, where we are inviting the, excuse me, inviting the community to come together to share their priorities, ideas, and dreams in order to craft a vision for the Beacon City School District. This date serendipitously is also Pete Seeger's birthday, I think in the spirit of that. He would be happy to see the community coming together for this event. We will be, this event will be in form of brainstorming session, where we'll be using a methodology in which specific questions are asked and ideas are discussed towards shaping a tangible vision for the, for the vibrant school district that we believe Beacon deserves to be. We hope to explore where Beacon is now and where we collectively want it to be going forward. The Advocates for Beacon Schools have always had as a part of their mission to maintain that Beacon Schools alongside Beacon's community has limitless, limitless potential. With this event, we want to include the voices of those from all walks of life in our city, including educators, board members, parents, students, and stakeholders. So having said that, you're all invited to attend. We'll have a more formal invitation coming soon. And until then, please, again, save the date for May 3rd. It's going to be at 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Beacon Rec Center, which is at 23 West Center Street. Thank you.
So Lori, I don't want to, I, I don't usually comment, so I am going to say that that was, I am going to say something at my superintendent's report, similar to that, but different. So I just want to say, okay?
Wait, in fact, I should have mentioned in there that we are working in collaboration.
So I might be before you, but I'll, I'll talk about it a little more.
That's great, wonderful.
Hi, my name is Meredith Huer. I'm the Chair of the Beacon Arts and Education Foundation. I just wanted to give everyone an update that we are very excited to be working with all four elementary schools on what is called the Fresh Food Mural Legacy Project. This is a project that is going to be sponsored by the OzNet Foundation, run by Common Ground Farm, by teaching artists from there. Every fifth grade class will have a field trip to Common Ground Farm, where they will learn about vegetables and growing them. And then they'll, and have, a teaching artist will come to the school several times to work on a project with them. I think most of the schools are doing a mural project, one might be doing a tile project. And each school is kind of deciding where they want that project to live. And I love this idea because the fifth graders are then leaving something behind. And I know, at least for my son, elementary school was so special to him, and to be able to leave something that left the school a little more beautiful would have made him feel really good. So hopefully, it'll make this year's fifth graders feel great. And we are also excited to sponsor a workshop with the drama students, who I think most people probably saw up here at hand, because again, they deserve a treat. So, or a treat for them is to sponsor a workshop with Hudson Valley Shakespeare. They came in last year, and the drama students really loved it, so we're going to send them in again this year to work with the kids again. And both of these projects will go through the Bosse Coaster so that we will have a credit next year toward doing it again. Thank you very much.
Are there any other parent groups that we should speak? Okay, open to the public. Did you read it in my absence last time?
I'm absent.
So I think we can move, I think we can move forward. Mr. Bugg?
Pauline?
Yes, please.
Good evening, my name is Frank Bugg, resident taxpayer. I'm going to very quickly try and put forward several questions to the board as well as to the superintendent, which I hopefully can get some response to. I'm sure you realize that the, I'm sure you realize that there is a considerable amount of interest on the part of community and stakeholder looking for a meaningful input into the superintendent's selection process. So... So for that reason, I would like to ask, is this Board willing to set up an advisory committee of stakeholders that you would empower to be able to interview and make recommendations to the Board Committee in regards to their selection or choice of these individuals? And if not, I'd certainly like to know why not. Secondly, my question is, is, I'm sure you realize that the lack of diversity in Beacon City School District has been a concern of mine for some time now. And with the recent announcement of a number of positions that are going to be vacant for the school year, I'd like to ask the Superintendent if she would be willing, given this lack of diversity, a very seriously imbalanced situation, whether she would be willing to give preference to minority applicants in any situation with equal qualifications? I see no reason why that shouldn't be done because it's been, the system has discriminated against them for years in the past, which is obvious by the numbers which we see, which created this situation. Lastly, I'd like to mention that I was a candidate for the Board of Education and recently withdrew my application because of personal reasons, which understood that I would have to probably miss up to six to eight months of meetings because of various treatments. However, we have a Board member in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, missed up to eight meetings with no explanation from the Board for whatever reason, who returns to the Board, and I don't need to cast any aspersions on his reason for missing, or their reason for missing, but the point is, that person is not here to do what they were elected to do. I'd like to ask this Board to set, to set a, missed meetings, excused or otherwise, before a Board member is terminated.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Buggins.
I would like to quickly say that I give my congratulations to the cast and the high school weekend, which I thought was excellent, which was an excellent play, and from beginning to end, including all the advertisement and everything else, that they did an excellent job, and I'm very, very pleased with it. Thank you.
Can we talk about the search and then we'll talk about the autism?
Oh, well, he was, he was asking about diverse candidates and, okay. They were talking about the search. So, Mr. Buggins, yes, I, I, I mean, I didn't sit in this seat, I sat a couple down, but I've been listening. So it's always a struggle, so I, I, I'm not going to say that you are not correct. I am going to say that I did see an article recently in USA, US News and World Report that I don't think we're the only ones that have this problem. So it's countrywide and, you know, again, I don't know, you know, how we're going to do that, but I, I have, we are going to have positions open, okay? So I am going to cast a much wider net to try to attract people here than maybe we haven't done yet, okay? I can't really speak to, you know, the process is going to be looked at, you know, again, we've struggled here for that, but maybe we haven't reached out far enough. So I can, you know, we've already started the process for that. We do have teacher openings, we're going to have administrative openings, so I will promise to do that.
Could I comment to agree with you?
I don't know.
Mr. Buggins, policy doesn't allow for interchange after your comments been made.
If you want, if you want to, Mr. Buggins, if you want to have a conversation with me or email me directly, I'd be more than happy to do that. How's that?
Thank you.
Okay, let's do that, let's do that, because I don't want to put you in that spot. We can have a conversation, okay?
Good evening. My name is Mike Rukowski, I'm for the Board of Education. So over the past few weeks, I've been attending different events in schools to get a better view of the entire district and the people in it. When I met with Principal Cadella at Glennum, who showed me the new smart boards in action, I met with Principal Wright at Forestal, who showed me the great reading room that teachers put so much time and effort into. I attended a talent show at Glennum, Excel at South Ave, PTO Media Ronda, and was at Peter Pan last Friday. It's been so refreshing to see great things happening in this district in spite of the chaos and negative vibe at the Board meetings. As I spoke with people in the districts, I found a number of questions regarding the Board election and budget voting process. I've learned so much about each and felt it was a great opportunity to get involved and give some of my knowledge back to the high school students. They're just achieving their civic right and duty to vote in the Board at budget election as well as the presidential election. I contacted Mr. Lefaro and asked if I could present this information to his economics class. He said they'd be registering to vote and it would fit nicely with their discussion, so I gladly volunteered my time and together, I put together a simple presentation on the election and high-level view of how the budget works. The students were attentive, responsive, and asked great questions. Even later that day, my son said that a couple people came up to him, said they saw me in school and that the, my presentation really helped them understand. I posted the presentation on my Facebook page, which is Michael Rukowski for Beacon Board of Education, so that all can view it and hopefully better understand the process. Take a look and let me know if you have any questions. So I would like to thank Mr. Lefaro for working with me and fostering a teacher-community relationship, which I think is invaluable to the future success of our school and what both the Board and the citizens have been asking for in community involvement. On May twenty-sixth, there is a career fair in the high school. This is a new opportunity for the community to get involved and volunteer their gifts and talents to help students in the school. Ms. Paul Hamis has done a fantastic job putting this together, and there is a list on the district website of the flyer and also a list of careers or professions that they need someone to represent. So there, there are all kinds of kids with all types of dreams, and maybe, you may be able to help them recognize a lot of those dreams. You know, it does not have to be an engineer, a lawyer, or a doctor. These days, the entrepreneur, the photographer, the startup, the computer consultant, and trades, like plumbers, electricians, technicians, and landscapers that we need for our kids to talk to, the list goes on and on. So please reflect on how you can give back to the students and take action. Look at the list and sign up. It really does make a difference. Thank you.
Hi, again. My name is Meredith Huer, parent, taxpayer, and candidate for Boardhood. I'd like to thank Bill Zoff for bringing the recent visit from Regent Judith Johnson to the community's attention. I attended last Thursday night with my mom, and while I hope still will be...
Don't steal all my thunder.
Don't take my time. Stop the talk. I'm sure Bill will talk about it more. I actually wanted to talk about one particular point she made. She made a really big deal of saying that there are, they are looking for specific outcomes for our children, but that we can get to those outcomes any way we want. And she even suggested that if we wanted, we could download the curriculum from the Sidwell Friends School that the Obama children attend and use that as our own. We don't have to follow any particular curriculum. We could, if we chose, work with teachers to write our own in a way that we feel reflects our community and supports our students to achieve the best possible outcomes. She was challenging us to take charge of our district. Given that all three of the shows were sold out, I'm sure most of the people in this room saw the performance of Peter Pan this weekend. It was unbelievably fantastic, from the sets to the costumes, acting, singing, dancing, and flying. The teachers that make this happen are dedicated beyond measure, but it's also important to note that parents were welcome here, too. Many parents helped sewing costumes, coaching kids, literally hoisting them in the air to help make the show happen. And this is also a place in our district where kids are free to take chances and even take charge. I was so impressed that a student was responsible for all the choreography in the show. I think Regent Johnson would have been impressed had she seen the show. This is part of what she was hinting at when she spoke of taking charge of our district. The drama, the drama club contains a lesson for us. There is no state mandate that we do this, but it's one of the places in our district where students are empowered to explore outside the box. In the same way that we have been inspired by the success of our track team this year, we should look at both of these examples and see how they're working, why they're working, and how we can repeat these successes in other areas so that more of our students can feel that they belong somewhere. We need to provide more opportunities like these that allow our children to collect real experiences so that when they do graduate from Beacon High, the world that they enter in will not seem foreign or scary. I think our teachers would like to see more of this, too, but I'm concerned that teachers have not been supported in this area. In fact, I'm concerned that they've been discouraged against it. When I first began volunteering in this district, I came across this myself many times with the Beacon Arts and Education Foundation. No seemed to be the operative word. It's natural, if you hear no enough times, to give up. I recently heard from a teacher in our district that he had spent time planning an overnight field trip to Washington, DC for his students. He did fundraisers and got parents to buy in, but in the end, the trip never happened.
Recently?
He was told they couldn't go because the school district attorney did not like the hotel's cancellation policy. The teacher did more research but found that the cancellation policy was boilerplate, the same everywhere, and so the trip was canceled. I, this is not the first time I have questioned our school district attorney, and I would really like to hear from each and every Board member why you have not gone forward with getting an RFP for a new legal counsel. It was requested last week, and I'd like to know if you're going to move forward with that. Thank you very much.
John Burns?
John Burns, President of Beacon Teachers Association. As the leader of the Beacon Teachers Association, I'm often shocked at how people can stand at this podium and tell the Board of Education that we must focus on finding a Superintendent with extensive educational experience. I think we've already been down that road. As I watched Superintendent Quateroni announce collaboration with the city of Beacon to provide after-school activities in all four of our elementary schools, I think it's plainly clear that the best Superintendent we've had in the last ten years is the current Superintendent. To that end, to that end, I'd like to read a resolution that was unanimously passed at the March twenty-ninth meeting of the Beacon Teachers Association Representative Assembly, and I have a copy for the Board of the Clerk. Resolution: Whereas the Beacon City School District has had nine Superintendents in the last ten years, and whereas the absence of a consistent educational leader in the district has hurt student achievement, and whereas the constant turnover in Superintendents has had a negative effect on teacher morale, and whereas the current Board of Education has failed to provide the district with consistent educational leadership, and whereas Emery Quateroni has been a longtime loyal administrator in the district, who has shown capable leadership qualities, who has improved teacher morale and the efficiency of the district, and whereas Emery Quateroni has led the district back to normalcy, therefore be resolved that the Beacon Teachers Association does hereby strongly urge the Board of Education to immediately appoint Emery Quateroni interim Superintendent of Schools through the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Rebecca Corrales?
Good evening. I would like to share, oh, Rebecca Corrales, I'm a parent and taxpayer. I would like to share a letter that I sent last week to the Beacon Board of Education. I am looking forward to hearing some meaningful responses to my questions this evening. The letter reads as follows. I wanted to follow up with you, the Board of Education, on comments made by Mrs. Tracy Anilak Everett from the recent March twenty-eighth Board of Education meeting. At that meeting, several speakers, including myself, came forward asking the Board of Education to act now to enlist community input on a vision for our school district that could be included on the RFP. This topic has been brought up repeatedly over recent weeks and months as our district anticipates searching for a permanent Superintendent of Schools. During the Board comments, Mrs. Everett said, quote, "I'm not really sure where this is all coming from. The community was involved in the last process, the community was involved in the process before that, the community was involved in the process before that," unquote. The question is, can you please remind us of the details of the community's involvement in the last Superintendent search and in prior searches? During the same comment period, Mrs. Everett said that the, quote, "entire community," unquote, "should participate" and that we should not be limited to a committee. The question is, can you please articulate the specific ways that the Board of Education plans to engage the entire community in this process? I hear general statements like stakeholders are encouraged to participate. However, what I'm not hearing yet are details and specifics about this participation. Furthermore, in Mrs. Everett's commentary, it was related to the public that the hired agency will provide us, Board of Ed, with a timeline and a mechanism to gather vision. Question is, does this mean that there will be no vision statement in the RFP? Does this mean that the Board of Education will not be defining its own timeline for the Superintendent search and hire? Does this mean that you, as a Board, are intending to wait for an outside agency to tell you how to gather input from your constituents? Has the Board of Education come to a consensus on all of these points? And if so, when was it discussed publicly? Mrs. Everett says, "Rest assured, the community will get to participate again. As a parent, taxpayer, and voter, I will be much more assured when I hear answers to these questions." Thank you very much for your time.
Part of my comment is going to talk about the vision, so can I wait, we'll wait a couple? Okay.
Jan Stark?
Good evening, my name is Jan Stark, taxpayer. I am re, two minutes ago, you said there were six teachers retiring, now you said seven, just wondering when that changed. Also, in the budget, we state that we're looking for equity in elementary schools, but yet we're not being the mandates at the middle school. Mr. Rukowski just said that he sought out Mr. Lefaro to do a presentation to his class. Is that not a violation of the campaign rules for people that are running for the Board of Education? I thought we weren't supposed to go into the schools. On or about April first, President of the PTA sent down an email with an attachment to his membership, like as a copy that you have, announcing that he has negotiated retirement incentive with the district. He claims that forty-seven teachers qualify for this incentive, which reduces the number of years of service in the district from twenty years to fifteen years in order to pay for their unused sick days. Usually that means being paid a half day to pay for every unused sick day. This community, current retiring teachers, can receive anywhere from five thousand to twenty thousand dollars. Usually, a district would require an additional ten to twenty teachers in order for it to be a savings for the district, roughly half a million dollars they get afforded. This letter does not give a minimum number of, does not state a minimum number of teachers that need to, well, participate. If no additional teachers take advantage of this incentive, only those that are currently retired will benefit from, with no savings to the district and only cost to the taxpayers. We are out of compliance with the mandates at the middle school, offer few electives at the high school, and claim that we do not have the money to resolve these issues, so how can we justify this incentive? This type of behavior negotiation was deplored by the current PTA president of the former Superintendent President of the PTA, but it seems to be okay for him to do it. Just seems when the district is tight for money that it would consider something as crazy as this. If you are, I would suggest that you think long and hard before you do this, and that there are, and that there are a significant number of additional teachers to make it worth our while. To just have it as six or seven current people to get this reward is an insult to the taxpayers because they, they filed under the contract where they had to put... where they had to put in their letters three years ago. If we do not have any additional teachers, 10 teachers, men,
Please say it.
then there is no savings to the district, only cost. And that bothers me as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Mr. Stark, you want to wait?
Sure.
I'll answer you. So you brought up a couple of points. You talked about equity at the elementary school. You talked about the middle school, but most importantly, you talked about the retirement incentive. So as you know, when I did my budget presentation, I spoke about reserves, and I didn't really get into it because they were specific in nature. So one of them is an employee benefit accrued liability reserve, and what that means is that that reserve can specifically use for sick leave payout, which we have not touched in probably the 10 years that I've been here. So we've been able to manage the sick leave payouts through the regular general fund budget. So a retirement incentive is meant to save money. So as you know, on a go-forward basis with senior teachers, you would save money on a go-forward basis when you replace them at a smaller step than what they're actually being paid at. Okay, so that's the first part. The second part is that most of those teachers that are retiring this year have been in the district more than 20 years and will be receiving their sick leave payout according to the BTA contract. So that is not a change. That is an entitlement that they had before. We're not changing that. To be honest with you, we're looking for teachers that may want to retire. We're looking for ways to change the programs, to change the staff up a little bit, to actually save money more on a go-forward basis, because in my budget presentation, you noticed that the tax cap is not going away. We're at less than 1%. So as a district, it wouldn't be fiscally responsible of me to not talk to the board and talk to the teachers about, probably more on a go-forward basis. So yes, you know, we got a lot of extra state aid this year, but I don't know what's going to happen next year. So we're trying to maintain what we have now. We have a way to pay for it. It will not increase the tax levy in any way. And so that was a decision that I brought forward to the board and asked the board to consider. So I'm trying to think what else would you like to do.
So actually makes sense to give those teachers, six or seven teachers?
Jan, you can't, Jan? Okay, I wanted to quickly, just one other point that you made regarding Mr. Rakowski being in Mr. Lofaro's classroom. I did contact New York State School Boards Association regarding just that incident. There was no wrongdoing on the part of Mr. Rakowski. While it was a poor decision on both the teacher and the administrator in the building, it does not affect his candidacy in any way.
Thank you.
Julie Murphy?
Hello, my name is Julie Murphy. I'm a resident taxpayer, parent of an elementary school student. I quietly follow the turmoil surrounding our school district and feel that I need to express them with my concerns. Over the past year, I've experienced grave concerns over the allegations that were brought forward, the manner in which they were brought forward, and the manner in which many of the professionals we employ in our district and other members of the community conducted themselves during this sensitive time. The Beacon Parent webpage, in my opinion, served as little more than a poster child for cyberbullying. Now that the transition for the BTA president and the superintendent of schools is complete and the dust is slightly settled, I am now concerned we may have jumped from the frying pan and into the fire. Of course, the rationale behind the upheaval this past year is the kids. We are doing this to provide the best educational opportunities for our children. However, as a teacher myself with 24 years of experience, I fail to see how these changes in district leadership are leading us in the right direction. Mrs. Kellogg, I'm directing my questions to you since you are the Executive Director of Curriculum and Staff Development. It is my understanding that the current union leadership took issue with having a required written lesson plan and filed a grievance on behalf of all of the teachers within the district. I find it quite alarming that teachers in our schools would take issue with writing lesson plans. Writing lesson plans, a task that is inherent to any teacher's job. My questions to you are, is having a required lesson plan and holding teachers to certain expectations grievable items within our district? How is this grievance resolved? How are you holding building principals responsible for ensuring all teachers are well-prepared for instruction through advanced planning? Secondly, it is also my understanding that the current union president is using district email to discourage teachers from collaborating with ISTs, stating to the teachers that they will be on their own if they choose to cooperate. I am wondering why the union president is allowed to comment on the work of ISTs as ISTs assignments have nothing to do with contractual or union issues. If our students can benefit from instructional support, why would a union president be allowed to cast dispersions on the nationally acclaimed program that the district set in place?
Please say it.
Are teachers in our district allowed to refuse assistance from peers to help our students? And if these behaviors above are condoned by the district, how effective can the program possibly be? And what other support services have been put in place for students not yet successful in our classrooms?
Ms. Murphy, policy does not allow for you to direct questions directly to Ms. Kellogg. I'd ask Ms. Porteroni if she could answer any of the questions that you stated.
So I do want to say that I, you have brought questions forward on a grievance which I can't answer publicly. I'm just not allowed to do that. Some of the other questions that you brought up, I think are things that have been said out loud. I mean, I don't, I understand, you know, your questions. I understand why you're asking specific things, but I can't speak to why the BTA president would say things. I think I'd be talking for that person. When you're asking why that person stood up in front of the mic and asked us questions, I don't really know that. I mean, I don't know what, I don't know how to answer your question. You're asking me to comment on someone else's comment at the podium, so I don't know, do you want to?
I'm asking why that kind of behavior is being condoned? Why is he allowed to be? Why is he allowed to?
I think, no, well, I think what's helpful, I think you've asked a lot of great questions, and I think they deserve answers, but I think right now, we're not in a place, right, to give you those answers because they take research. Right, but I'm a little, I mean, if you want to contact me directly, I'd be more than happy to answer your questions. I'm not sure what you're asking me to comment on, so that's what I'm a little unclear of. So if you want, or I can contact you, or you can email me and ask me specific. If you ask me a question, I would be more than happy to answer it or ask Mrs. Kellogg. But if you ask me why someone is allowed to get up to the podium and speak, is it, you know, is not something that I can comment on, do you understand?
No, because I wasn't questioning why somebody was allowed to.
Okay, so how about, so then why don't you email me directly your question, and I'd be more than happy to answer them? And if Mrs. Kellogg can help, you know, with the response, that would be great. Okay?
Thank you. Okay, we've completed our list, and we have additional time if there was anyone in the public that would still like to speak.
I wish I had a prepared statement here, but I'm pretty quick. I'm Joan Antuwager, and I'm a grandparent. I'm a parent, well, I'm the first person back there. And I went, because Bill Zoff advertised this, to see Judith Johnson, and I wish everybody in this room would be there. It was one of the most inspiring things that I have heard recently. And Bill, it makes me think of the time you and I were talking, and you were asking, what do I think is wrong? And I said, there's just a lack of joy and excitement. And Judith Johnson was just the opposite of that. She was all joy and excitement anyway. And she talked about things that I would love to see us talking about. I would love to hear time, I wish the board had time, and would put that on there to talk about, which was, what do we want our kids to be when they grow up? Because that's what our curriculum, et cetera, should be about. How do we want them to be able to contribute to the community and society someday? It's, these are existential topics that we should really be talking about. It's really important, and it's probably the basis of everything. She talked about communities and districts emphasizing the we and not the I. That it's really important that we all come together, which is something we're all kind of fighting about here. It'd be good if you could do that. She's just, she's an amazing woman. I think we're going to have a lot of changes in the next few years because I think the current Board of Regents is not going to put up with Cuomo anymore. And they're going to take back their role of making decisions about how our educational system should be, and I think that's great. Beyond that, I guess I'm going to make two things that I would love an answer to, of why, Melissa, why is it a bad decision for Mr. Rakowski to be speaking to a group? Is it because he's running for the board, or because, it's because he's running for the board? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So that you feel it's sort of a conflict of interest, right? Okay, good. And secondly, to the other response, I taught for a long, long time myself, and actually, my feeling about lesson plans is they're real important if you're absent. But beyond that, it's kind of tough. I mean, I taught in a situation
Please say it.
where I had 30 kids in the room, and everybody had their own lesson going on. I couldn't write a lesson plan for that. So sometimes if you're doing imaginative stuff, you cannot sit there and write a lesson plan. And then we're going to have to come up with new things. Thank you.
Hi, Kristen Flynn, taxpayer, parent. I don't have a parent statement. I just have some more responses, actually, to what we talked about. Mrs. Thompson, I do wish you had said, in my opinion, it was bad judgment. My dad was on school board for 10 years in Orange County, and he came in and talked to my participation in government class. It wasn't, it's part of roles in civic life. I think that the idea of getting students interested in voting is an incredible one. And if the teacher felt like, I mean, we trust our teachers to protect our students, if they felt like it was a bad decision, I think they would have, they wouldn't have made it. We had a great meeting with some people in the district this past week, and one of the phrases that keeps sticking in my mind is this idea of you've got to name and detain them. And I feel like what happens with us every couple of weeks is we get together and we are coming at things from our very specific perspective. I think that the reality is, is that before many of us got involved, there were friendships and relationships here, and people who were part of an extremely tight group, I would say. And they supported one another, and they cared about one another, and they've gone through things in their lives together. And I think that there are very personal reasons for some of the decisions and some of the priorities that happen with the board. And I don't think that that's something that we can understand, but I think it's something that everyone should sort of strive to check themselves about. I think that also with reference to the lesson plans and the ISTs, we're talking around something, which is that we all know, we've been here for months, that ISTs, the TOSSAs that turned to ISTs was a contentious thing. And if, and there was a whole discussion around whether there was graduate work being done and things like that. There's, so we're not saying what we're really saying here, which is maybe there was a reason, and it was a personnel reason, and they, and there was some greater subtext. But now it's all being introduced in the public, and if there's really concern about it being something about kicking the dust up again, it's getting kicked up again. Like, do we, I mean, I feel like if we want to talk about ISTs and TOSSAs, we should talk about it. Are they in the budget for next year? Did they work?
Please, please say it.
I just think that hopefully we can, at some point, all start to forge relationships where we do work together and where we do actually see that we all are kind of going towards the same goal and trusting one another. I also presented this presentation, and it seems pretty neutral.
Before you go, I did not state it was of my opinion because it was not my opinion. It was the words of the legal counsel I received from New York State School Boards Association. The question that I proposed to them was, the question that came to me was regarding campaigning on school grounds. Because to some, it appeared that what he had done was campaigning because he was in a classroom with majority seniors. So I approached, I contacted New York State School Boards Association to verify that that was not indeed a legal issue. And what they said was that it was not, while it was a poor decision of both the teacher and the administrator, it was not a legal issue for the candidate. So I didn't say it was my opinion because I was expressing exactly what was told to me.
I just want to make a brief comment about your question about ISTs and TOSSAs, which I didn't include in my budget presentation. So I just want to, I want to say just kind of blankly that we have lots of different, we have more than just a few TOSSAs and ISTs. So again, I don't want to say we're not including them, we are including them, but we're going to, we look at maybe some of the ways that we use the IST. So in the library, for example, those will continue if we need teachers on special assignment. Or we have an IST or a TOSA that does some work for CSC chairperson. So that kind of thing would continue. And we're looking at the way the other ISTs were scheduled and how we can change the way that looks, so.
I'd just like to bring up the electronic sign. I think that teachers
I said that this for you, Mrs. Burns.
Thank you. Teachers, parents, and students are all pretty sad that it's not working.
I know, I know.
Is this funny? It also looks pretty sad that our, our school district can't do a simple thing as a sign and make it work. So what I'd like to know is, I'm sure you've done an estimate, and I'd love to see that estimate and see what exactly is wrong with it and how much it's costing to fix, and what parts are needed. I mean, maybe, you know, I'm not saying maybe we can all put together the money and get it fixed today or tomorrow, but if we're not looking at getting a new sign for another year or another six months or until the next school year, there are a lot of people who are sad about that, and I'd like to know what you've done, what are the estimates, and what's your moment?
Okay, so a couple things. Yes, we're all very sad because I will say it's an important part of our school district, so I don't disagree with you. That money was not in the budget. It is, our estimate for a new, we can't get parts to do it. And we looked at a couple of different ways to fix it, and to be honest with you, it's not going to look good. It's just not, it's like a piecemeal kind of thing. I don't think that's the way you want to represent our school district. I think I'd rather not fix it and get something different. And again, going in that aspect, it costs over $20,000 in an equipment line that has to be budgeted for. I can't transfer money from another budget code into equipment without having it be part of the budget. So although I would love to do it tomorrow, I can't because it is a significant amount of money. And the board mentioned too also that there might be a couple more options because technology is a little bit different. So of course, we want to have something, if we're going to spend all this money, we want something to be representative of our school district, something positive. So believe me, as soon as the budget process is, the budget is voted on and July 1 starts, we could have something in place before school starts in September, so that, we are going to, you know, consider that. So I don't want you to think.
So can you share what it is, I mean, in terms of the parts that are needed?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I can let you know?
That would be great.
But we've looked at many different areas, and we just can't get the parts for that. I mean, it is, it's at least 11 years old, if not longer. I think it's probably closer to 15, so we run into that issue.
If you could share the parts, that would be so cool.
Okay, I can do that.
I think one of the things Ms. Springer is missing, especially this time of year on that board, is
is where all our seniors are going to college.
That's, that's, yeah. I love that. And everything, you know.
Yeah, but I love to catch the names as I'm sitting at the light to see what schools our kids are choosing and where they're headed. And maybe we can find another way to, to get that. That's always possible and, and, you know, maybe there's some other things we can do too. But I think it's really exciting and I think little kids like to see it too, the younger kids, to see, you know, where their neighbor is going or the kid that they know or maybe their babysitter.
Right.
So.
Do we have any events contract for the sign or no?
No.
And I'd like to commend all parents that get involved in their students' classes and get in there and really help out. I think the more parents help out in the school and the plans and in class, the better. Thank you.
Was there anyone else that wished to speak?
Hi, I'm Mr. Doyle, I live in the district, I have a child. Exactly, just a quick procedural question about the scheduling of city council and board of ed on the same night, same time. Is there anything that can be done? Has it always been that way except for it's been that? I'd like to pay attention to both things. Is it a charter or the executive session or something?
Thank you. Okay, I believe that's everyone that wished to speak. We have our superintendent's report, please.
So I am gonna start with Peter Pan, although I know everyone else said it. But I thought they did a fantastic job and I know they were sold out, which is an even more show of how popular and successful they are. So I wanna publicly say that they did an excellent job. I also mentioned in my budget presentation about the after-school program, I just wanted to say a little bit more about it. I have to thank the PTAs, PTOs, and PTSOs because they all came to me, all three schools, Glennam already has Fishkill Rep there, wanting to get something in the schools. And I also have to thank Mark Price in the City of Beacon because he stepped up to the plate. This was something that he'd been wanting to do for a while. So I just, I just kind of set the PTA presidents to Mark Price and then I kinda let it go from there. So I know, I'm hoping that things went well at the council meeting. Oh, we have an update, oh, good. So Christine will give us an update on her part. But we're excited about that coming, coming to pass and starting in September. And again, I'm not sure how it's all gonna look yet, but we're excited that we're even thinking about doing that, so. I wanna mention also that on the board agenda is the adoption of the calendar for 2016-17. So I hope the board has had some time to look at it. We've worked, I didn't realize how hard it was to do a calendar until now, but we worked in conjunction with both the teachers' union president and the administrative unit just to make sure that we were all on the same page. Biggest discussion were, you know, snow days and give-back days. So I wanna thank everybody for their help in that as well, so. And the last thing I wanna talk about was what several parents talked about, about a vision. And I think we've all heard the feedback from all the prior board meetings. And we've, we've decided that we really can't wait for the arrival of the new superintendent because we're not really sure when that's gonna be. So we wanna, we wanna do a forum-type process, a process that was similar to what we had done when we had built the old high school. So to kind of reach out to all the people in the area that have a stake in the school district. So we would include all the stakeholder, we would invite all the stakeholders of the district. So the district leaders, the B.O., the Board of Ed members, the administrators, the teachers, families, and other community members to attend. We want, we all have the same goal of wanting the best for our children and I think that we all need to talk about it and make that happen. So we are scheduling it for April 27, which is a week from one, two weeks from Wednesday. And we will put more details on the website. And what I'm gonna probably ask is, and I don't know who you're gonna respond to or how you're gonna do that, so I have a day to figure that out, but it will be on the website sometime on Wednesday. But I would like to get some, almost like an RSVP. So I need to find out what size room I need, you know, where we need to be. So if you could, I mean, obviously I would not stop anybody from coming at the door, but it would be helpful for me to kind of know space, how, how we're gonna do that. It would be, you know, it would be a format that, you know, that hopefully we're similar with and it would not be the one and only meeting we would have. So this would just be a starting point to try to move forward, to get, to get that accomplished as well. And I think that's it.
Do we have any board comments tonight?
So, I get the microphone win. Okay, so I did hear from Mark Price. He went this evening to the city council meeting to present a tentative plan for the after-school program, which would tentatively be in three schools that are actually located within the city of Beacon. So the Beacon Recreation Department can't run a program in the town of Fishkill, which is where Glennam Elementary School is, and they do already have a program there run through Fishkill Rec. So Mark reports that the city council was very open to the idea. He will be coming back in two weeks, on the 25th, the next workshop. So what we are asking, the rec department, is if you live in the city of Beacon, if you would write a kind letter to your city council person. Doesn't have to be kind, I guess, but also, or an email, just giving your support of the program. Because I think what the city probably wants to figure out, because they are, you know, running a budget as well, is how much will this cost and is it sustainable with people who will participate? So I do know there's a survey out on Facebook. Mark let me know that he's gonna put it on the Beacon Recreation Facebook page if it's not there. Just asking how many people are interested, how many days a week would you do, et cetera. And if you don't wanna reach out to city council people, all of the PTSOs are participating in the project. So you can send an email to the PTSO board, any member in your school, and let them know you want the letter forwarded and then they can be shared. It'll be a workshop, so you can go on the 25th, but you wouldn't be able to speak to the city council. They don't take public comments at the workshop. So that's where we are at this point. So it's, it's another positive step in the, in the direction. And the hope is that before, well before the school year's over, we'd be able to present to families the options. So the things I had for my board comments were, we do have a policy meeting coming up, Tuesday, April 19, 7:00 PM in the board office. We'll be talking about facilities use. And just a reminder to the members of the committee, we had discussed really reviewing that policy in depth before coming to the meeting. It's very long and I think it could possibly take up the whole meeting if we really don't have notes in place. One of the board members at, I think the last meeting, I think it was Bill, asked if we could take a look at the public comment section again about the time limits to see if maybe that could be expanded a little, so we can add that to the agenda. A policy that we need to review, that we are partway through the process of, is the Title I parent engagement process. So I know one of the talks was to have some meetings as well with parents to help us work through that policy. So you can expect, and, and we would open it to parents of any school, not just the Title I schools, but it's a policy for Title I parent engagement. So I just, I believe the Title I schools in the district are all acceptable at Glennam and Beacon High School. But anyone is welcome when that comes out. I wanted to say thank you. And I guess it's human nature, but I remember last year at this time having a lot of community members expressing concerns about the state assessments and how it would be managed in the buildings and how it was managed and how the process was. But tonight I didn't hear any comments about how great it went, so I thought I would make one. Thank you to the teachers, to the staff, to the students. I'm a teacher myself, I know how difficult it is to manage, but all the students seemed to make it through. I saw and heard some comments from people saying that it was a more positive experience and it's a process. So thank you to everybody who was involved in that. I had a, just a comment on Beacon Arts and Ed. I wanted to thank you for the regular updates. I know in the past we had limited contact and we really didn't know what was going on as much. My question about it is, and maybe moving forward, on July 1, we have the reorg meeting. So we're doing all sorts of appointing and we're making committees and these types of things. Part of the Beacon Board of Ed policy states that there will be a board member participating on Beacon Arts and Ed. And so if we can maybe figure out with the bylaws of Beacon Arts and Ed and the board of ed policy, either get them to match, just looking forward. So on July 1, if there is a board member that would need to sit on that committee, that they could be appointed at that point, so maybe we could talk about that. I was gonna ask about ISTs and the budget, but you answered that. Is the parent communicator in position in the budget?
The parent communicator is a stipend that comes out of the Title I grant. So I have not, well, that doesn't title one grant yet.
Christine, from the policy committee, I forwarded you a student board member.
Oh, yeah, that's also on the agenda, yeah, the student board member. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Student board member, yep. We had actually intended to have another, to add a policy meeting a couple of weeks back, but some people had issues and couldn't make it. So we decided to wait until everybody could be there. So that's on there, I forgot to mention it. And then the last comment I just wanted to, to make was that, I think you talked about getting the word out about the forum and getting RSVPs. I, I personally feel it would be great if we had a Beacon School District Facebook page that was just for information putting out and that would be a great first event for it if-
Okay, did I say something then? So I didn't say, because I know that Tim Fischin spoke about it in his presentation. So we're in the process of getting a new website. And what the new website will do will be, it'll be friendlier with Facebook. So again, we have realized that, you know, we might be one of the few districts that does not have a Facebook page. It will not be something that obviously the public can post to, but it will be informational. The other part is that website does allow school-type information to be kind of brought out. So it's almost like its own page for schools, the way it's designed, so that it'll be better communication.
Thank you. Okay, that's it, that's all I have.
And I just wanted to point out real quick, just to go with what you were saying. The city council meeting where they're gonna next talk about the after-school program, you said was April 25. And it just so happens that our meeting that week is April 26. So for anybody that wishes to go to the city council meeting, I think Christine said you wouldn't have the opportunity to speak, but you could, you know, have your presence.
And that's a workshop, so they rotate one weekend's of meeting and one weekend's of workshop, so.
Right, so in that regard, somehow it worked out.
Any other comments, Melissa? Any board comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you to National Juvenile Society for their work with autism and all the charitable events that they've been doing throughout the year. I think it's to be commended, what our young adults are doing to better the community and make life better for everyone.
So I just wanted to mimic that, like, kudos to the National Juvenile Society for highlighting and supporting people with disabilities. I think that that's an important role for students and I think that it definitely allows other students to see that it's a good thing to do so they can follow suit with that. I just wanted to get more information, if possible, on the PTO collaborative. I know that when it was started three years ago, it was a combination of people with different roles in the district. And I'm not really sure how they meet now or who's allowed and invited. But if I could obtain that, so that I could just know, learn more about it, I would appreciate that. In the state report, it does talk about lesson plans and the state report is on the district website. So anyone interested in learning more about what some of these issues are that people are speaking to, it is on the district website and it does show areas of concern. Not that, you know, we recognize that they're concerned. However, they were highlighted by the state when they actually did a report here. So that information is there as well. And I'm not really certain what I can and cannot say about the presentation given in the classroom. So I am gonna say that there are several people running and I think if we're gonna go into the classroom, and this is just my opinion, and make a presentation, it should not be specifically got my ability or me wanting to be voted in. So I guess that would lend itself to whatever. But I guess Melissa got the real answers in terms of the legalities behind it, so I guess we have to just stand for that. Thank you very much.
Any other comments that way?
I'll start off with the meeting I attended with the Regent Judith Johnson last Thursday. It was a great meeting. It was obvious that she is a former educator. I would say that most of her opinions on the state of education in New York and what should be done, I would say are in, in sync with what I would, I would expect from parents, administrators, and other educators. She pretty much spoke out about the importance of public education. One thing I wanna bring up and it struck me as very important. She talked about the importance of advocacy, not just with your legislators, you know, but she also said, talk, you know, send letters to the regents. She says, you know, she does, she does pay attention to those sort of things. And so if you have concerns about education, you know, certainly send letters to your legislators up in Albany. That's very important. She's also said, she'd be more than happy to, you know, to, you know, to take letters from people as well. She says the regents need to get opinions from people as well. And, you know, part of the problem is I think a lot of people don't understand what the regents do. But they are responsible for all public education, all the way up from pre-K all the way up through the university level, you know, and all public schools in New York State. So she, she was really expressing that, that if you have something you wanna change, you need to, you need to be an advocate, not, not just at the local level, but also at the state level, especially since there's a lot of decisions that we, we have to live with, you know, that are, that are based on, on the laws that are established up in Albany. So I, that was something I thought was really important to express from that meeting. But it was, it was a great meeting, there was about 175 to 200 people there. So it was very, very well attended and I thought, I think it was important for everybody who went there to listen to that. I also wanted, a question had come up about when was the last time we had public input on our superintendent search? My recollection may be a little wrong, but I would say it was two superintendent searches ago when we had Dr. Bandlow. Since then, we've had Dr. Doorward and, and, as well as our last superintendent. So Dr. Bandlow was a, what I call a full-fledged search, where we had a committee made up of stakeholders. We had a parent, we had administrators, we had teachers, we had board members on that committee. That committee was charged with interviewing the cooldown list. It was, it was, not everybody responded to the, to the advertisements and the, actually makes the final list. You'd probably have 60, 75 people that applied. Not everybody was even qualified, you need spit certifications in the state, things like that. So the list got called down and it was, I'm gonna say it was probably about 10 candidates that were interviewed and that committee then brought forward their recommendation to the board. I'm expecting that, you know, it'll probably be a similar process this time to that. The board hasn't made a decision yet, finally, in what we're going to do. But, you know, certainly, we also, at that time, I'll also mention, that was also, we did have a couple of public meetings where anybody from the public could attend. The point of those meetings was to come up with what are the qualities that we wanna see in a superintendent? So that was all, all done in the search that eventually wound up with Dr. Bandlow being the superintendent.
As well as Dr. Doorward.
Did we do it for Dr. Doorward?
There was a committee for Dr. Doorward, there was a, there were community forums that were held in a similar fashion.
Thank you.
I believe they were in the high school library.
My memory's a little-
And then after the bigger forums, it was kind of brought down to a committee structure for Dr. Doorward as well.
That's it, I said, unfortunately, I've been on so many of these that it sort of blends together after a while.
Okay, we'll move on to new business.
Hi, I'm ahead from new business. We received our emails today for the beaconk12.org. And I was just wondering, what is it gonna be, the procedure or process for responding? Are we including all board members on responses? So I'd like to have a discussion about that.
And what would be your suggestion?
What would you mind? I'm fine with anything that we decide. I, it doesn't matter to me, it's all foilable and so forth. So it doesn't matter how it goes, but for transparency, I feel that, you know, people or adults who make judgment calls, if it's something that needs to be shared with the rest of the board because it's gonna relate to discussion, then it needs to be shared with the rest of the board. If it's something, asking a simple question as to what my opinion is on a budget item and I don't think that needs to be shared, my response needs to be shared with my personal opinion on a budget item. I'll share that in public with everybody. They just may have missed it or they may ask for clarification. So I don't know if that has to be a reply-all response or so forth. So I didn't know how- So I didn't know how the system was set up. We got the emails tonight, we gave our passwords, and I just want to make sure that we're being consistent with what we're doing and how we're responding. So if it's free-for-all and there's no procedures, I'm fine with that. I just don't want to get an email and then have to, and then someone say, "Well, you responded to an email, and you know what, I didn't know that you responded to this email." So I thought it would be a worthy discussion, to see what everyone's feelings are.
Well, the other piece is, there are certainly situations where an individual would email one or two board members and not the entire board. And so then, board members are making decisions based on information that maybe some people have, or just don't, so I don't know. Mike, is there, would this be a policy that the board would come up with? I mean, we have a committee meeting on Tuesday, so I'm wondering if that might be...
It could be a policy, it could not be a policy, but certainly it would be appropriate if the boards decided to address it.
I didn't hear you, Mike.
I can hear the end of what you said.
It could be, there's nothing inappropriate about addressing it in policy. It could be an appropriate subject matter for policy, but there's no, it's not among the list of required policies. So you can address it through something more informal, you can address it through a board resolution, you can address it through policy, whatever the board decides.
So I would move that we put it on our next policy if you can defer discussion.
What do you think down there?
I don't think it needs to be a policy, I just think there needs, I'm sorry.
I don't think it needs to be a full-blown policy, I think it would be great, but these are active emails, because we signed on and so forth. So if I get an email tonight, "I didn't like your comments about emails," and I think, "How can you say free-for-all?" Am I going to be replying all to all board members and adding them to the email that my response back? Or am I just emailing it separately? So I don't know if it has to be, I think in the long run, I think it would be great to develop a policy, but I'm just looking for some guidance, so I'm not doing one thing, Bill's doing something else, and Melissa's doing something else. And then someone gets mad because they're including everybody, but I'm not including anybody, and some people include the people that they know agree with them, and then not the people that will disagree with them and so forth, so...
So I guess what I would, again, move, since we have a meeting Tuesday, that we put it on the agenda, and my reasoning is that, you know, moving forward, the board changes. Every year, there are three new board members, and so as a new board member, it's very hard to learn all of the, you know, sort of unstated rules. And so if we could have it as part of the policy, and people have questions about the email, we can say, "Look at the policy," and there it is. Maybe there can be a regulation within that...
So then my question is, I think it's great that the policy's meeting, they can address it, so I would like that the other board members then give their opinion to give direction to the Policy Committee as to what they're looking for.
So, oh, go ahead, Kelly.
My opinion is, is that because we don't operate in silo, I think that we should reply all, and this way, everybody sees. So if there's transparency that's being requested, then transparency is what you will get. So I don't really like this operating thing in a box, I don't really like that. I find that...
Does anyone second my motion?
I don't know.
I didn't know you made me.
I did, that's okay.
But what was your motion?
My motion was to add the topic of email to the Policy Committee meeting on Tuesday.
Okay, so the policy...
I'll second.
However, you just said that we had a big thing to deal with, so we're going to be able to deal with this big issue that's going to take up most of the time, and now two other issues that we're adding to the agenda?
Well, you can add another meeting if we can't get through, but I think the email issue is priority.
So I think at this moment, right now, I think what Anthony's asking is, what do we do right now? We have the email counts, and what are we going to do from now until the 19th? Are we going to agree that we all answer together or reply all together, or are we going to answer in silo? I think that's the question.
Maybe I can make a suggestion. I mean, I think a policy is not a bad idea, to at least look at it as a way of going forward. However, that won't become a policy until at least our next meeting, so we were, you know, you're talking a while, so, I mean, I agree with Anthony, is that, you know, we're going to be using emails before then. So I would suggest that, you know, if it's more of an individual, as Anthony gave an example, if someone just asks someone's opinion, that's not really board business, and I think they can certainly answer back without CCing the rest of us, as long as they also have to be careful of, if you're giving a personal opinion to a member of the public, making sure that they know it's your opinion, that it's not the board's opinion.
That's a disclaimer at the beginning.
Right, right, right.
This is all my opinion.
Anything else I think that's board business? I think it makes the most sense that everybody on the board be CCed on, so that we're all kept in loop. Now, there are certain things that I don't think we all need to see. If somebody's asking, if, for example, if our board clerk is asking us if we can attend the next meeting, I don't think we need to CC everybody on the response, for example, because the board clerk is going to collect all that information and then decide whether we have a forum for that meeting or not. So, I mean, if you want to, you can. I mean, I typically ignore that when other people CC me on those anyway, because it doesn't really matter whether I know or not, I'm going to find out eventually. But I think if it's real board-related business, something that we, as a board, will need to discuss or need to vote on, it makes sense for us to copy each other on that, so that we all have the same information, so...
I might have been mistaken, I thought we were talking about the procedure for community members emailing us and how we were dealing with that. I wasn't thinking about having that whole huge discussion, because that's already in place.
Well, we already have something in place for that, yes.
Okay. So Christine made a motion to add the email policy to the agenda, the April 19th meeting. Anthony seconded that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, so we'll add that policy to discussion on the 4/19 meeting.
So we're all in agreement with, what, Bill and I synthesized there? I think Bill put it pretty eloquently. So, you guys ready for it? It's V O E White at beaconk12.org.
Hey, are you going to update the, have the website updated with those emails for us?
I believe Kelly's on that.
Okay.
It wasn't big news, Kelly? It wasn't big news? It was already on the website?
I did it, too.
Okay, may I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Wait, I had an item of new business.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, I didn't say it. Okay. So I attend city council meetings regularly, and I've been always noticing different things that happen there, and things I like, and sharing them with the board in the past. So one thing I like is how they have public forums on topics that are either highly controversial in the community, or people have very diverse views on. So I attended the meeting, and people were talking about a housing development going in Beacon. And so they were having something called a public hearing on it. And so they announced it, and they said that anyone in the community could come and express their views solely on that one topic. And they gave them five minutes per speaker, and it was part of their agenda for a meeting. So I would like to add to the agenda the idea, tell me if I'm not saying it straight, for us to hold a public forum on our superintendent's search, so that we could open it up to people who attend the meeting, to share their thoughts, so we could hear, before we move forward, we could hear a little bit of input on people's thoughts. I feel like people want to share their opinions, and it's hard, because it's smattered in with all these other topics that are brought to the board. So I would ask if we could add that to the agenda. If not tonight, then at a future, the next meeting, if people aren't ready to think about it.
I just have a question. So how would that be different than what Ann Marie is...
Ann Marie is having a meeting about the vision. So this would be a meeting about the superintendent's search process. Any thoughts down there on that topic?
I can't really hear, like...
You can't hear me?
No, I can't, you just moved the mic a little.
Are you then saying that they can't, that there's no comments during public comments regarding the superintendent's search?
Right, that's how they do it at the city council meeting, and that was what I saw. They had their time for the public, they made it only 30 minutes that particular time, so that there was time to allot, it wouldn't lengthen the meeting. But that slot was reserved. So if you were going to stand up at the beginning, and your topic was, "I want to talk about this housing development," you had to raise your hand and say, "Nope, I'm talking about the housing development," and they went in the second portion.
But as we're moving forward, is the, you know, I feel like we haven't even started an official process yet, and everybody's kind of like up in arms, but as we're moving forward, though, we're going to be giving, like, updates on the superintendent's search, so why can't, like, at that time, we open it up to if there's concerns, or people are going to give us feedback on what we're presenting there? I mean, we obviously, we're still in the RFP process, we haven't really decided how we want whatever search agency to go with, you know, as well as what we want them to do.
Right, and that's exactly why I'm saying, I think it would be helpful. Like, I was watching the city council members, and they were really listening to these two different sides, and it was helping them decide how they wanted to move forward as a group. So I'm just saying, if, that's why, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, it's something you would do before you kind of went forward with putting out the RFP, and it would be a time then to make those decisions and have those discussions. So, you know, that's my opinion and what I would ask for. So, you know, I don't think it would hurt anything to have that time slot, it wouldn't lengthen the meeting, we would shorten the public comment, you know, for that meeting. It could be, I mean, we have a, we have public hearings on two things that I know of, which is, we have a public hearing on the budget, and we have a public hearing on Project Save, right?
Right.
So it would just be another type of public hearing to add. I don't know if that's even the right term for it, but that whole idea of allotting a specific amount of time just to discuss the superintendent's search and to let people, and I'm not saying we have to use five minutes, I'm saying, you know, let's plan one, because I think...
We were just talking about workshop, so if you, did you want to, were you thinking of, you don't want to take it away from public comment, but do you want to designate...
No, I was saying, take time away from public comment and make a certain piece of the hour.
Isn't that violation of the policy?
Not if the board votes, right? The board can vote to change.
My question was, isn't that a violation of the policy?
So, I mean, if you want to add it, workshop.
I'm saying, instead of having a workshop, that would be our workshop, if that's how you want it to be.
I think there's a lot of ways to work it out, just the theory, you know, of the idea was what I was bringing up.
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as it's, I mean, doing a half hour doing a workshop, as long as, you know, we don't have other topics that have to be discussed on the workshop, I think makes sense.
Can we put it as new business?
No, that's our business, not...
Not public business.
Why can't we make it public business? Our business is public business, no?
I'd rather put it on workshop.
So I guess, I mean, I guess my question is, I don't know that we have to work out all the details tonight, it's just more the idea that we would hold a public forum, and maybe on our next agenda, under discussion items or whatever, we could, you know, all come with thoughts about how it would best work. But I think, I think it would be beneficial for me as a board member to hear the thoughts, you know, as the RFP is being developed, to hear the thoughts of many different people.
Agreed.
Can't hear you.
Agreed.
We can't hear them either. We're asking what Kenya and Georgia agree.
I personally feel that we're going to be giving the updates, I don't understand why we can't get feedback at that time, and why it has to be like a special agenda. I mean, I don't know, I just need to think about it a little more.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to think about it a little more. I also want to see how Ann Marie's vision forum goes, and maybe we want to adopt that format. Instead of trying to squeeze it in this meeting, which is already usually a jam-packed agenda, I don't know, I feel like a whole separate meeting would probably be better.
I just feel like we're kind of like jumping ahead, we're still not even out there with anything.
But that's what I'm saying, the information gathered at a public forum or a public hearing would be helpful for us in looking at a process, you know, just to think through it with a lot of different people in the community who are clearly thinking about it, worth thinking about it.
I'm about to cut you off, but I think this whole, I think that's what you've been saying about the whole RFP process, and what we want that search agency to do for us, and the number of forums that we want them to hold for us, and the information we want them to gather for us at these forums. Because there's not really a limit, and I know that we're going to be looking at what we had discussed, I know, you know, what we wanted to see, I know I had given some input on what I liked from the letters, and what I wanted to see in the letter moving forward for an RFP.
I gave mine later.
I know you gave yours late, but I was on my...
So, Mike, I did it a long last time.
There wasn't a resolution, it was just a...
Right, but so now I talked about it, and so the next time, do I make a motion, or what's the...
Can you hear me?
Sorry. I'm just asking, Mike, you know, if I'm just talking about it, and then, how does it work? Do we discuss it next time? What?
Well, it sounded to me as though there was a number of board members who wanted to sort of think about the process, how that would work. I didn't hear a resolution either moved or seconded.
Well, I asked to add it to the agenda. I said I wanted to know if I could add an item to the agenda to hold a public hearing to discuss the superintendent's search procedures.
Okay, I still haven't heard a motion to actually take some sort of action, more in the form of a question, so. You can do something tonight, you can do something at the next meeting, you can, superintendent in speaking with the board president, forming the agenda, can add something to the agenda in that way, a workshop can be added to address it, you can do it before or after the vision meeting that Ann Marie talked about. So I think there's a number of options on the table here, you may not be ready for a resolution, or you may be, so it's your call.
I guess my fear is that if I don't do something tonight, then we're going to kind of forget, and, you know, I don't mind waiting till after the vision or whatever. So I'll be ready next time.
Well, I think it's a positive step to take, and I think that we can, in talking to Ann Marie, just quickly, we don't have a big item for our workshop at our next meeting, which is the 26th of April. So we could set aside 30 minutes for the purpose of hearing thoughts on that.
Right, right now, the plan is to have the valedictorian, salutatorium come, just being introduced to the board, but after that, since the budget was talked about this week, the next meeting, I don't have anything pressing to do, the following meeting is the budget hearing, so if you, you know, want to do that, we can move that forward.
Okay.
So we can advertise it that way, too, just so people can...
Are we all the same guidelines, you know, we want three minutes per speaker?
Well, that's what I was thinking we could work out, but I don't know if it's going to be, so, I don't know if people are hearing, I don't know that everybody is in agreement, so I don't know the...
Are we all in agreement that to use the workshop, 30 minutes of the workshop, for the purpose of hearing thoughts on the superintendent's search process?
And there's no dialogue, we're just listening, or there's going to be an exchange?
So at a public hearing, it's sort of like public comment, but there's no response, it's just the board listening.
And I would suggest the same, two minutes per speaker.
Two, two. She said they had five.
Well, I'm talking about what we normally do. We only have half, we only have, well, only half an hour, if you give five minutes and everybody actually takes five minutes, you're not going to get too many people, so I think you need to go smaller than five.
Well, I would say three are, yeah, the three we do now should be enough time for someone to express their thoughts.
And being that it's during the workshop, it can follow whatever format we want, it could be maybe two people who come on and get up together and just speak at the same time for three minutes, it doesn't have to follow our policy.
So we're all in agreement that you'd like to move forward with that? I see a lot of heads nodding, but, yes?
I'm fine with it, I just, I'll see how it plays out.
Okay. We're good? All right, that doesn't need board action. Any other new business? Okay, may I have a motion for the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda is listed on the agenda.
Can't hear you.
She made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to pull 11.08 and 11.09.
Did anyone else have any other items to pull? So we're voting on the consent agenda, less items, 11.08 and 11.09. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, may I have a motion for agenda item 11.08?
Motion for item 11.08.
Second. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I just had a question. It shows that the teachers are working 188 days, and the students are in 183 days, so I counted up the superintendent conference days, and I came up with four, which comes up to 187. I was wondering where the other day is. Is it, I see a Raiders' Day, Ann Marie? I don't know, if that's like a...
Okay, say, ask your question again, you have 188 days for teachers.
Right, and 183 for students.
Yes.
And then I counted up four superintendent's conference days.
Yes.
That's 187, and I was wondering where the other day is. Is that the Raiders' Day in June 23rd?
The, the student days and the teachers' days don't have to match. So the 188 days for teachers is contractually in their agreement. They have to be scheduled for 188. So they have to work a maximum of 183. There's the five snow days are, are put in there. So the teachers' day run according to the BTA contract. That's, there's a chart in their contract, how many days we have to schedule them and how, what their minimum days are. The student days are scheduled at 183. If you, if you have five snow days, that goes down to 178, but you're allowed to add back the four conference days. So they're well over 180 days for student days. So they kind of run a little bit independently of that. Does that make sense?
So, so he's asking though that the, the rating day must be that 188 days.
That's counted as a regents day.
Okay. And that's all teacher, all teachers come in for that day?
Yes.
Okay.
So the teachers come back September 1st, then they're off the 2nd. Is that correct?
Yes. We, we went back to a, a model we had used a few years ago. So we're having superintendent conference day before Labor Day to do professional development and then have them come the Tuesday after Labor Day to, to do more in the building level, to have the administrators work with the teachers and have some development done on the building level rather than district-wide. So they're doing the two superintendent conference days at the beginning.
Is there a reason why we didn't have them come back that Thursday and Friday and then just start school?
We, we did, but people, a lot of people do go away for Labor Day. And we historically never had school on the Friday here in the district.
Well, those are contracts are September 1st.
Um.
Right? Most contracts?
Right. They're not really required to come back before Labor Day. They have in the past. So that was just a discussion that we had with both the administrators and the teachers not to have that Friday before Labor Day.
And does this calendar pretty much match the Dutchess County BOCs?
Yes. We use Dutchess BOCs just for, you know, because of our children that go to BOCs. These have more days in it than the BOCs calendar does for teachers, but.
Speaking of BOCs then, if we're looking at this calendar, because, so the students are, are going to be involved in the CTEC program, juniors and seniors. So the days that we have our superintendent's conference days, is that, do you know if that's going to correlate with Dutchess BOCs? Because right now, if we, if you have a half day after superintendent's conference day, our students do not get bused to BOCs.
Um, as far as the calendar is concerned, so the, um, both Dutchess BOCs is not starting school till September 7th. So they do have a superintendent's conference day on that Tuesday, September 6th. They are off in February for the 17th. We chose superintendent's conference day, so they won't be there. And the November superintendent's conference day is election day and that's district, that's countywide that all the districts have off.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're voting on agenda item 11.08. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion for agenda item 11.09?
Motion to approve item 11.09.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Ann Marie for all of her work that she put in for the budget. It's not an easy process. And she was wearing two hats doing it. And I just wanted to publicly thank her and say, "Great job with it."
Thank you.
I also, I, I think, I, I made a suggestion to, to Ann Marie that we increased the tax levy to go up to the maximum of 0.97. You know, at, at that point, if we do that, then it's a question, do we, you know, do you put additional items in the budget or do you reduce the reserves? I mean, I, I recommend reducing the reserves. And that's my opinion. You know, I, I look to your guidance on that. But anyway, I think in order for Ann Marie to consider that, she needs to know if that's the, the wish of the entire board. And it's just my opinion at the moment. So I, I think maybe the entire board should weigh in as to whether they think it's important to in, in, increase the tax levy up to the full 0.97 and, and have Ann Marie look at that, at the impact that would then be to the reserves.
So I, I just want to say something before the board can comment on that. So we talked about a public comment a little bit about the teacher retirement incentive, which I don't know which teachers may take advantage of that. So that might be a little bit more flexibility in the budget that will allow us to do a little bit of staffing differences. So it, it, it would probably, you know, be better. I, I can't tell you what to do, but I can recommend just from a fiscal standpoint that you may want to decrease the amount of reserves and fund balance you're using. The budget has the flexibility to make sure that the programs are, are run equitably across the elementary schools and we're able to add a few things there. I'm concerned about adding a lot more staff that we can't sustain in the future. I'm just saying.
So I, I just think, you know, I, I gave my, my opinion on it, but I think that Ann Marie needs to hear from the rest of the board as to whether they think that's something that she, she should look at.
Well, I'll say that I share in that opinion that we should follow that path. And I, I like the idea of, of saving some of our reserves, but it's critical to me that it's equitable between all of our elementary schools and what's offered in each building. And if nothing else of this budget, that is my focus.
Okay. I would say I agree with Bill because our budget for the following year will be based on where we leave off next year. And so that just reduces the, it's not a big difference, but it, it will make a difference. So I do agree with Bill.
Thoughts down there? We need you guys, your thoughts down there.
I'll tell you, Mike. I'm torn. I, I like having, having the, when is the last time that we didn't fully go to the tax gap and, and we were able to give back and not use, lead everyone for every tax dollar that they have? But I do agree that, you know what, it could affect us in sustaining programs and maximizing budgets in later years. For that reason, I would say it, I think it's something worth looking at to, to see if it can be done. But I'm fine with also having the money go back to the taxpayers. It sounds like, you know, with the, the state, with their financial, financial aid has been, you know, they've been giving a lot more and the ERS and TRS has been declining in recent years. And it seems like that's the trend. I know it's going to go back upward sometime, but it looks like, you know, the state was a little bit better with the state in as a give. So if that's the case, I don't see it as an issue giving back to the taxpayers as well, even though it's not a lot.
I agree. I mean, that's my issue is that I, I think that both ways that can be looked at as beneficial. So I really don't know which way to, to go. So it's kind of like a tough, you know.
Um, Melissa, do you think it would help? So you're, you're being asked to vote on the budget. The budget number that you're voting on will not change no matter what decision we make? Might be easier for the board to quantify the difference between the next board meeting to see actually how much the taxpayers will be saving. And then you can make a more informed decision. Would that will help?
Very good. Okay. So we're voting on agenda item 11.09. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for coming out.